They'll take a look at it and if it fits with what they feel, they have to write administrative leave and go through their administrative process to do it on the state roads.
Right, okay.
But they want the selectmen to be on board because they don't want to be hanging themselves out there.
So it's their, it's their rule but based on our request?
Yes, and we did, you did send a letter to them.
I'm issuing it.
Yeah, and then I gave, they asked for a distance and I gave that to you, I think?
The email, I believe.
So, so what we need to do is send them a letter that says, "We request no parking along Route 109 in the following locations, from here to here, from here to here." I, we may have, I haven't seen, I don't remember seeing it.
We did it through email on the distances because they asked for something a little clearer. I know I went out and
He's looking at it now, I think.
Paste it off.
Now, I understand that part of the letter was that they're reviewing the file.
Right, and I talked to them.
And there's not a lot of continuity in Tufton Borough as a whole.
Yeah, they called it Bennett Road.
Yeah, right, so we need, we need to give them a current request for what we would like to see as no parking areas.
And they, I thought I had
And it ought to be, my, my idea is that it ought to be a letter that, you know, not, "Okay, so it's unclear here, we'll send you an email and says this," you know. So we put it together in one piece of correspondence that says, "This is what we request."
Okay.
And, so it's all wrapped up and there isn't any, you know, well, attach this one over here and that one over there.
No.
So as it relates to the town parking ordinance.
Yes.
I know we have several things there. And so, and the way that that gets fixed probably is that we, we adopt a revised ordinance that supersedes all of that.
Probably, yes.
Right? And is that something you can
I can work on.
Draft?
Yep.
And then we can have a hearing and get it done and be done with it?
Yep.
Because parking is
For now.
Well, parking is something that doesn't have to go to town meeting.
Right.
The selectmen
I'm sure when the permit thing was put together, that was thought to be a, it doesn't seem to have worked out.
Well, I think we, we changed, it said it had to be a sticker located in a certain spot and we realized, well, that was kind of birdson and you have people that change cars that want to hang tags. So we, we changed our process without necessarily changing the written part of the process and went with it, if you will. I can, I can put something together.
All right.
I'll get that.
Andy, I would be happy to work with you back and forth between the two of us to bring something to the board.
And consistency on the signs, that's clear, clarity on that.
Yep, yep.
I mean, something like that.
So, we, so when we're clear about what it is that we want and, and we, we bring an ordinance forward, then we can adopt the ordinance and be clear with the signage that matches the ordinance. So there aren't, you're looking at this sign, it says that, you're looking at that sign, it says something else.
Inconsistency. So it's the same everywhere.
Right.
Another thing is, we had a lengthy conversation about community policing, community relations.
Yep.
And you were going to come up with a list of
I gave you, well, I gave you a list of some of the stuff where we had that, we exchanged that list and you had to read it. And October 4th is National Coffee with a Cop Day. However, I went to the, and I'm also, as part of the chiefs, and in fact, I got a call earlier, I gotta call them back, our detective director. Typically, the first week in October is Community Policing Week nationwide and, but it's always been done by presidential decree making it, and there isn't one so far this year. So I was, the debate is whether or not, who I write to.
Right, super.
Who I write to to get that going. Should I write to the senators or should I write to the White House or how do I, how do I get that ball rolling? But anyway, so I did list some of those things that we are doing. I haven't heard any more about child safety seat training. I'll reach out to her again to find out what she's supposed to set up this fall. Reading the Coffee with a Cop website, I mean, it's, we don't really have the location to do it, but I'll try and do something for that day anyways. Because what they recommend is you have a fast food restaurant that has turnover. So people come in and come and go. We don't necessarily
It's Tufton Borough.
That's about the closest we got.
Not that vast, but it's, what would you do, I gotta
And, you know, I know, because Manchester is doing it with McDonald's. I mean, so it's, obviously something like that is quick, easy, you have a lot of, you know, foot traffic in, so it works. But we'll put something together on that. I did do the old home week stuff.
There's an event planned for October 21st between the Parks and Rec and the school for festival, if you will.
Okay.
The great location for
I'll talk to them about that.
Yeah.
And the 28th is also Drug Take Back Day again, DEA one, so I sent the letter requesting waivers for that day.
To do it up at the transfer station?
To do it up at the transfer station again.
Excellent, excellent.
Is that September or October?
October 28th.
Thank you.
No, I, on Drug Take Back, I've read a lot, great deal of respect your thoughts and comments on the drug box.
It's just not, I don't think it's workable from where we're at right now.
You know, you're absolutely right, I've had a couple of other communities that I'm in, you know, listen to what we talked about. They say, you know, you just don't need the wrong element trying to get into it because this is not me in 24/7.
Right.
You know, and I'm thinking, I'll be candid here, I'm thinking of the people who work here don't need issues.
But, I mean, obviously, as
I thought, I thought it was well presented and well thought out.
I mean, obviously, as we look at a new station, if that comes to fruition, that should, I certainly would want one in the lobby, that'd be, that'd be great, that'd work. Because it'd be a secure location under my, under the police department control, you have, you know, you should have video monitoring for the building anyways, you should. That would be just another, you'd monitor your lobby anyways, so to be covered. There'd be no cost other than getting a box as opposed to, I mean, I'm still, I'm still going to make a trip to Sanford one of these days, take a look and see if that's a doable thing, but
Are you aware of any other small town police departments in our state that have a drop box?
Not our size.
No, I asked the same question, knowing off the top of the head.
As I pointed out in my memo, Wolfboro doesn't have one.
Yeah, but
I mean, I'm not saying
Wolfboro has other issues, okay?
I'm not saying that, but I mean, they have more staff, they have 24-hour staffing, they have monitored lobby, I mean, all these things.
As you pointed out before, there've been some other issues with respect to drugs in the Wolfboro Police Department. So that may have something to do with, with where they're at. No, I'm, I'm, I'm not thinking of larger towns, I'm thinking of towns, you know, similar to us. And the, the visibility that these, that these drop boxes get suggests there's a great benefit to them. I don't, that may be all out of proportion to what the real benefit is.
I think there's a benefit, I do. But with every, it's kind of like, I had a discussion with somebody with body cameras the other day, I think there's a great, the great tool, great benefit, but there's costs. You have to have somebody that monitors that, somebody to make sure it's working, like we have one of our video systems not working properly. So I've got a message into the manufacturer, which I think is in the Houston area, so they're probably explaining why they're not getting back to me right now. My point is, there's, with everything you've got, there's another thing you have to keep running and feed that, that either the money, time, or
Sure.
There are practical issues, yes.
With that box, you have to have two people that, and they shouldn't be the chief, that have the key to it to access it. That, in my opinion, shouldn't be the chief, should be two other officers that have the key to it. Otherwise, if I'm one of the people with the key and stuff's missing, how do I do an internal investigation? But I think the only, I may be wrong on this, but I'm not, I don't think Wakefield has one. The only towns I think that have drop boxes are Multnor and Conway in the county.
Those are the only two I know of.
Yeah. I don't think anybody else has them. That's, I, Center Harbor doesn't.
And they're all publicly accessed, I mean, they don't check your citizenship when you drop your drugs.
No, and, and that's part of the rules, is we can't check.
Right, so, I mean, a Tufton Borough resident could go to Multnor
Exactly.
You know, it's
And I've referred people to that. I've referred people to, I thought at one point Wolfboro used to still do it, even though they didn't have a box, but, you know, they just, because they have the 200 collection dates, which we're all confused too, through our, like drinking house surpasses ways, but
Can I shift gears?
Yes.
My compliments over the years, you have patience of Joe, but new police station.
Yeah.
We got a letter from the library trustees, Gordon, and he was passing it on to us. And it was a letter he received from Skip Hurt. And in that, Skip Hurt listed a number of different things. And he quoted you as you've done some research on cost for new buildings, cost per square foot and, and all of that. Made, made a lot of sense. I'm just, I'm wondering, is, and it's a balancing act on your part, you're not trying to usurp or jump in line or anything like this, but could you give us a paragraph of some information or what you think or
Well, Skip has been in contact with Andre, folks, working with the library. Skip had an idea of
Doing both projects.
Doing both projects. He also had an idea of setting a cost, if you will, as kind of the guide, as opposed necessarily the
I had to jump in. I mean, I, I appreciate the research and let's get some cost figures together, let's go. If the library's going to put an addition on it, that's great.
Yeah.
We are not going to do it the way the library's doing it. We are going to put this on the street for bits, or we're going to have some real talk. Because Andre's not going to just waltz in here and get another job. I don't think they're being fiscally prudent by not putting that job up for bits, but we don't have any say in that matter. But we do have a say in the police department, and we are going to do that properly, we're not going to just
So
Ride the coattails of the library and get a police station built at whatever it costs. I mean, I'm, I'm not prepared to
So, so, to finish where it's going with that, so he was kind of making, wanted Andre to sharpen his pencil some and also kind of set a maximum cost, or set a cost, if you will, which we had ventured back and forth. And Andre's supposed to get back to me when he gets back from, he's got a vacation and he's working on some other projects. But in the meantime, I talked to Rollinsford Chief, and they're in the process of going through, start getting a new station, and they're not a lot larger than us, a little bit.
Yeah.
And they got a very favorable cost per square foot, three different methods of building it. I think there were two different contractors they looked at. They were design-built, which has some reservations, and that the, the other, but the, the other part of it that I cautioned Skip about those numbers on was that they were for the building. They were not for
Turnkey.
Not turnkey, not any construction management or site supervision that you might pay for separately. You know, have a, what do you call it, a job
Clerk of the Works, yeah.
Clerk of the Works on the site to manage it, to make sure that they are following the plans.
Performance bonds.
Yeah, yeah.
So how much was a square foot cost?
Depending, there were three styles they looked at. The one that I think the chief was leaning towards is about $200 a square foot. But again, that was building, no radios, no phones, no furniture.
Is this something you could put in paragraph form to us?
Yeah.
Because you've just educated anyone who would be listening to this, understand
The three, the three methods he looked at, and I don't know what they all involved either, but it was a much bigger building than what we're talking about, and it was, the cost was a surprise. $200 a square foot was insulated concrete forms, the styrofoam forms board, which apparently Farmington did for their police fire facility. They used, it was through growing construction out of Rochester. They also got a bid stick built, a little cheaper than that, it was $175 a square foot through growing. I think it was New England Homes modular, which had chunks of it come in, not, it's not just one modular, like a house, but it was, that was even cheaper than that. As a, I want to say that was $160 a square foot. That included, I think, the site work, included the site work, I'm not sure.
Wiring plumbing.
Yeah, wiring plumbing, they had
Interior finish.
Interior finish, what it doesn't include is your video, your audio, your alarm, your phone system.
Desk furniture.
Desk furniture, moving costs, clerk of the works. And they also, I can't remember.
How many square feet did your original plan have?
I think it was 4,900.
So 5,000 square feet, about $200 a square foot.
It's a million.
Million bucks. So, I mean, B, you've got another
Round number.
Fifty percent, so you're a million and a half.
Oh, I don't think it's that much more for the rest of the stuff, do you?
I don't know.
But the clerk of the works, everything?
I don't, I'm just
I mean, your phone system's probably $10,000. Alarm system probably in the same, 10, 15,000. I mean, it'd probably, less than 100,000, I would think. I don't know what the clerk of the works would be, but
You've got another 10 grand of bond, so, yeah. Well, you do a clerk of the works, so you do a building manager.
Yeah, I don't know how that, how they work.
But that's still a cost, so it's
Is there something you could work on?
I can, yeah, I'll talk to
Get some more Some architectural fees, or was that included?
That's included, because it's a design build. They, the, the contractor, design build, they do the plans and all that, and then they build it, rather than having a separate architect that argues both ways.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no architect involved, so you
Right, engineering is done by the
How do you do the change order?
That's a good question, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I
What was the question?
How do you do a change order in that sort of situation? You don't have that architect to balance it off?
Right, I don't.
I'm just wondering how that works.
And I, that's the, the thing, we were on that committee years ago and we looked at some places and they, they had gone through the design, the design build process, they're, some of them were kind of, they're, I mean, it's cheaper, it's cheaper, but any savings they can get go to the contractor, not to the
Right.
Town, and, and sometimes, where was it, was that what happened in Wakefield?
Wakefield, right.
Wakefield, because they had one switch, well, they had, you have to, by electric code, have certain lights on at night, while they ran one circuit with, like, all of the lights at night.
Yeah.
So they ended up with a pretty expensive electric bill, because they had to come back and fix it.
The jail was a design build.
Yeah.
And they ended up with aluminum wiring, tried to place, had to tear it all out, and that cost a ton of money, but
Right.
And then by that time, the contractor
And they have a wall that
Yeah, the wall was falling down.
I mean, it's not to say it can't work, but you have to, I think you need a strong clerk of the works, somebody looking over it, if you're
Yeah, I'm not certain it does work in this situation, when you get up into the million-dollar range, whether or not you're better off getting a, a plan that you, you like and then a building management company, and then you, the savings in order to the town as opposed to
That, that's
But it's a good number to have, I mean, if we're looking at a million two, a million three, whatever that number is.
Sure.
That's what a police station's going to cost.
Yes.
They're, they've taken 800,000 dollars off the table for the library because that, that was going to be the police station.
Yep.
So it's essentially another 500 grand.
Yeah, that was the figure.
That's
So hopefully they have saved 500 to get it all washed out.
Right.
That's, yeah, because I, I knew he was going, I knew Rollinsford was going through the process and they're not, I want to say their population's 2,800, it's, but they're obviously, they're, they have a little different dynamic, they're between, you know, Dover and all that, but it is, at now, not much larger than us. They have maybe two more full-time officers. They were putting, and, but they're putting a 6,000 square foot building in versus the, versus the 4,900.
4,900 included a Sally Port and all
Theirs is including a Sally Port, separate from a four-car garage. They put a four-car garage in. We were having a combined Sally Port garage, is how we were looking at it.
And as I understand, the last committee that I was on with you, that is a functional design, doesn't have every light switch and whatnot, but it was a concept, right?
A conceptual floor plan. Yeah, it's a floor plan, conceptual floor plan. It wasn't down to the, you know, you couldn't go price it necessarily on that per se because you don't have
Right.
Whatever due downs and what's its and what the specs are for the windows, that sort of stuff, but you can get a rough, if you're looking at just cost per square foot, you get an idea, a rough idea anyways. They have, Rollinsford, I, I think, I can't remember now, I think they have water to the site, but not sewers, but that was obviously another big cost potential there.
Right.
But they, they only have to do one of the two, I can't remember which right now. So it wasn't as big a deal as I thought it would be. But it's, you know, but it is, like, that was a thing I found out too, is, and that's just you've got to watch with some of these numbers, that's the building. They still have to factor in all these other
Right. And, you know, I, my personal opinion is, we don't want to have to go through this exercise or have other people go through it every 15 or 20 years, we need to build a 30 or 40 year building.
Anyways.
And so, why a modular that's going to wear out in 20 years?
Excellent point.
Doesn't make any sense.
Excellent point. Well, you certainly have a track record with the county, but the nursing home there is just a spectacular
We're a vast headache, we're a rate up going.
Yep.
Well, it works, what they did over there works.
Yeah, and there's no reason that you can't still save money and build something really good.
And that's, and, and so that's where he, he, you know, Chief Ducharme had gone through, talking with Groen, who built Farmington's PD, I haven't seen that yet, but I, that's what, he was, he seemed impressed with that. The, the cost savings with the, he, Chief Ducharme felt that the cost savings of the insulated
Concrete block.
Insulated, concrete, ICF
ICF, yeah.
ICF
Right.
Would offset the higher cost of
Oh, yes, those things are enormous, amazingly efficient.
And so
Bulletproof.
Yeah. So anyway, he, he seemed to be, I think, if they were up to him, that, from the way he talked, that would probably be his ideal.
The downside is adding to it. So you really, well, you can, you just have to plan on it, so when you build an initial building, if 25 years from now you want to add something to it, it's, it's ready. You have access and you have, you're septic and whatever in the right place.
So that's, that's another, someday I'll, I want to take a trip down and talk to Chief Drury about, you know, seeing what they've got there, but, and that was done by Groen also, so it's not like, you know, Groen made the two offers to
Right.
Rollinsford on both options, sort of going to a point of bids, there's, there's other options, not just bound, if you will.
Yeah, well, you're just keeping people honest. I mean, the idea of not putting it on the street, even if you're married to the guy, you put it on the street just to keep him honest. I mean, people are as honest as they have to be, and if you don't ask them, they'll do whatever they think is right, and it may not be below this cost, so. That's my personal opinion.
Anything else with the chief? I don't think so.
No. You guys? All right. Thanks for coming in.
Folks, we had, we had a target date of September 8th for Koha, that will probably be next meeting, a decision.
Yeah, Doc, didn't, didn't we decide that we were going to talk about that in a public field?
Yes, and I defer to that, I mean
Yeah. I'm more comfortable doing that on Monday than I am today.
I, I think that's great.
I think the only one here is that one-eyed camera over there.
Yeah, right.
So that if there is any public input that looks
Sure.
I mentioned the event that the, so just briefly, and then I'll bring it back up when we have more info in the room, if you'd like, but Parks and Rec has an interesting, uh, book, and we're in two sets of books here.
Yes.
And, so there's $15,000 that they've accumulated.
In their, in their revolving fund.
Yeah, which I suppose maybe just a little combo. It just, normally what would happen would be that they've got $6,000 or $7,000 worth of expenses for events, and that's, that would be a line item in their regular budget. And then the money would come in, and that would go back into the general fund. That's not the way it's set up, which is okay, I guess. But now the use of that 15,000, I think, needs to come to this table as opposed to being just at that Parks and Rec table. Only because those people are volunteers. If somebody takes umbrage with where that money went, for what scholarship or what, whatever, they shouldn't have to take the heat for that. I mean, that, that's an executive decision, that's something we need to take the heat for.
Right.
Because right now, I'll give you a for instance, there's a planned event at the school on October 21st, which is a fall festival, ostensibly to raise money to, to the sixth grade class trip. And what they're looking for, what the parent teachers are looking for is for Parks and Rec to be involved as partners in this deal. And then they're going to charge an entrance fee and hopefully raise money, and we're going to do whatever Parks and Rec is going to do, they can, for about that, probably clear the bank account. And my thought would be that, I mean, realistically, I don't think they're going to raise enough money unless every single kid in town goes to the thing, and probably they won't. And they all pay the $5 entrance fee. I mean, if we've got money left over and we're giving it to the, to scholarships, I'm wondering if we shouldn't just have Parks and Rec sponsor something like that, as opposed
I think you have to go back to the article that authorized that fund be set up.
Yes.
And, which has been since I've been in town.
Yeah, I'm sure it's been
Okay, it went to town meeting, and, and we can go back to the RSA and, and better understand how those things, the benefit is, it's an in and out, so when they collect fees for swim lessons and that sort of thing, that's a place that the money goes, and that money is available to purchase things associated with the program.
Right.
So, my, my
They've expanded a bit, and so
Yeah, so, so I guess my, what I wonder is, if we're talking about finding places for this money because we have too much money in the fund, then why do we have too much money in the fund? I mean, it's supposed to be sort of an in and out thing.
Well, that, and I'll, I'll explain how, why did that happen, and it's going to continue to happen, is that you, they come up with an idea, "Let's take the concert series," and all of a sudden they've generated $4,000 of profit. Because they've charged admission and then they're caught, you know, you take your costs off of what your, what your revenue is. Old Home, Old Home Day has gone from being, you know, a few people showing up to have a picnic at the fire station to actually
A weekend.
Yeah, it's a, it's a moneymaker. If that concert, and this is the first year of the concert series, if they just double it over the next three years, you're talking $10,000 worth of revenue after expenses. So that's where that's changed. And I'm okay with them generating revenue and doing all of these great things, I think it's just a matter of us, and I guess the, the way it's ha, happened in the past is, Parks and Rec has decided, "Okay, we're going to loosen up five grand of this money and give it to the trustees of this trust fund, and they can distribute it for scholarships or whatever." So that's an issue I think we need to talk about. The other one is, when you start having a $5,000 event, you need a cash box. You know, now we've got a cash situation where they're setting up a cash box and it's, it's sort of outside the realm of, of this town organization to a certain degree. It has no cash controls on it currently, so it's just, I'm not trying to make a problem, I'm just describing
Other communities, other communities like Ashland have had problems because they weren't, didn't have the foresight that you have.
I mean, I think it's just like three grand in that, like you said, for the swim program, that's one thing, but when you start having big events, and they start creating cash, I mean, we are sitting at $15,600 in cash, which seems like a lot of money to me for a Parks and Rec.
As, as I understand it, there were
As, as I understand it, there were two special accounts that were created at town meeting. One was the Conservation Commission, you know, it comes off of land use tax, five grand a year. And the other one was the rec, and it was for special projects. Now, I'd have to reexamine it again, like you said. There are two accounts that are revolving accounts. One Diane, there's one Diane has that when people come, people, we, we put, do something with the cemetery corner post, and then the person comes in and reimburses us. Another one is, street signs need to go up on private roads. They come in with the check, then we off, it goes to buy the sign post. And, and another one is the special events account for the police department, that's in-and-out. But those were set up exactly what you're talking about, under our current structure, with the Board of Selectmen, knowledgeable, I'm sorry, and there's accountability. I mean, the, the computer issue, though, we have to, with Parks and Rec, which, I mean, there's no malice involved, but they had money enough in their checkbook to go buy a computer, and they went and bought a computer. So we didn't have a really solid policy in place for computers.
But that computer was not bought out of the revolving fund?
It was reimbursed out of, out of the Parks and Rec budget, so...
Yes, right, it was, it was, it was regular, it was, it was out of the regular Parks and Rec budget, it wasn't out of the revolving fund.
Right, right.
So that had nothing to do with whether this one...
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't. I mean, it's the psychology of operation. I mean, I'm sitting here with my budget, I've got 15 grands over here. Obviously, I can't dip into it for this, but it takes the, the operating budget. It's called accountability, it isn't talking about efficiency. The psychology of budget, but at any rate... And there's no malice involved. No, but I think the, the Parks and Rec does a great job. They just, they just wanna do more. It, it just seemed a little odd to me, and maybe I'm just...
Yeah. So, well, it would seem to me that if that's money that's collected, associated with programming, that is money that you then spend on programming.
Right, well, when you start ratcheting up that, that 15 grand of whack, I mean, what are we buying? I mean, and that, that question came up, huh? It's, do we buy all new clothes, do we, well, we are gonna increase the number of lifeguards, but that's not coming out of that.
No.
Do we bump up the concert series? All we're done, all we've done then is, now we're gonna increase our revenue, and now we've got more money to spend. Or do we sponsor kids to summer camp, do we sponsor kids to Wolfboro programs, whatever? Just so you understand, you have my support, when you're at those meetings, please continue to represent the selectmen and understand... Well, how much do you guys wanna get involved in that decision-making? I guess that would be my question. Or do you think that the, the moron or whatever it was prevents us from getting involved in it?
Let's examine the moron. Yeah, I think we need to go back and look at, yeah, yeah, at the...